Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Delhi Township Board of Trustees meeting for March the 9th, 2016. As is our usual procedure, we will begin with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Tonight's moment of silence goes to a very respected contributor to the Delhi Township community. He's very active in OLV Parish. This is Mr. Joe Kappa. Joe Kappa was in Boy Scouts for 35 years and leading troop number 909 through Our Lady of Victory. Through his mentoring, both his two sons and two nephews became Eagle Scouts. Joe was an outdoorsman, a naturalist, and he shared these activities and hobbies with many people. Joe is survived by his wife, a daughter, two sons of which one was a former Delhi firefighter, and three grandchildren. So tonight's moment of silence gives our support and prayers in Joe's memory to those who mourn his loss.
To the flag of the United States of America-
And to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. We'll open the meeting with motions for consideration. Mr. Looby.
Motion 2016-31, approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting held on February 24th, 2016, and dispense with the reading.
I move motion 2016-031 to approve the minutes.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-32, approve bills for payment.
I move motion 2016-032 to approve bills for payment.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-33, approve the payment of overtime for pay period ending March 1st, 2016.
I move motion 2016-033 to approve payment of overtime.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-34, accept the voluntary resignation of Charles D. Wagner, part-time firefighter paramedic, effective March 11th, 2016.
I move motion 2016-034 to accept the voluntary resignation of Charles D. Wagner.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-35, approve the conditional hiring of Austin K. Eckler, Noah J. Sidley, and Austin J. Reiner, offered a position of part-time firefighter EMT with the Fire Department at the rate per the collective bargaining agreement with the Delhi Firefighters Association with an effective hire date after March 9th, 2016, pending successful completion of a physical exam.
I move motion 2016-035 to approve the conditional hiring of Austin K. Eckler, Noah J. Sidley, and Austin J. Reiner.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-36, approve the hiring of the Parks and Recreations Department, seasonal part-time hiring of the following with an effective date of after March 9th, 2016. Michael A. Sexton, seasonal part-time service worker at $9.40 per hour. Alexander M. Sexton, seasonal part-time service worker at $8.90 per hour. Benjamin G. Abbey, seasonal part-time service worker at $9.80 per hour. Gary S. Merritt, seasonal part-time service worker at $8.81 per hour. Daniel J. Widerstatter, seasonal part-time landscaper at $14.14 per hour. Beth A. Rodesheimer, seasonal part-time gardener at $10.10 per hour. Kelly L. Berger, seasonal part-time gardener at $10 per hour. And James W. Penny, seasonal part-time special event and program coordinator at $13 per hour.
I move motion 2016-036 to approve the part-time hiring of Michael Sexton, Alexander Sexton, Benjamin Looby, Gary Merritt, Daniel Widerstatter, Beth Rodesheimer, Kelly Berger, and James Penny.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Motion 2016-37, approve the hiring of Gregory J. DeLonge, full-time Community Development Director with a bi-weekly rate of $2,576.93 effective on or after March 21st, 2016.
I move motion 2016-037 to approve the hiring of Gregory DeLonge.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. And I'll take just a minute now and introduce to the community our new Economic and Development Person. And this is Greg DeLonge. And a little bit about Greg, he's actually an Ohio native. He's from Sidney, Ohio. And he also is a graduate of THE Ohio State University.
Hey.
Hey.
It helped.
He has worked as a planner for the city of Dayton, a senior planner for Washington Township, also a planner for the city of Marysville, and a deputy director of community development for the city of Zanesville. So we're very pleased they have someone with 15 years' experience in zoning, planning, economic development, and he's worked with residents, businesses, developers, and local governments. So we are really pleased with this hire, and we'd like all of the community to welcome Greg DeLonge as our new member of the Delhi team. Welcome, Greg.
Motion 2016-38, approve the fire chief to submit an application to the Local Government's Safety Capital Grant Program for 22 mobile radios and a VHF radio repeater. Request total of $97,000 with a 10% matching of funds, utilizing TIF funds for the match if approved.
I move motion 2016-038 to approve the fire chief to submit an application to the Local Government Safety Capital Grant Program.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Presentations this evening, we do have a few. Are you going to go first, Doug? Or I thought I was going to have Dr. Richard Fullwiler, yes, from the Anderson Food Pantry. So, welcome, doctor.
Well, thank you very much.
Come on up. Come right on up.
Okay, good. Look, am I know it's the last time I was here was October of 2013.
We've been here.
Yeah, good. And, as I said, I'm Rick Fullwiler, and I represent the Anderson Ferry Food Pantry. And it's kind of a dumb question, but I don't think any of us in Delhi want any of our residents to go hungry. And I got to tell you, the Anderson Ferry Food Pantry goes a long way in making sure that doesn't happen. For those of you who don't know, the Anderson Ferry Food Pantry is on Greenwell. If you're going inbound on Delhi Pike, you turn right on Greenwell, you've got the Ex-Chili Parlor, then you've got the Fire Department, then you've got a church, then you've got a very small building, a house, and in that basement is the Anderson Ferry Food Pantry. It's kind of like the little engine that could. In that little basement, we serve 500 families a month, about 12 to 1400 mouths that we feed, keeping the people in Delhi who need food in somewhat of a supply of food. Now, all the clients that come in are screened and validated. You can't just come in and say, "Give me some food," and walk out. You can only come in once a month, and if you have children, you have to validate those children to be sure that they are your children and they deserve to get some food. We have away food, clothes, personal care products, and as you can imagine, our needs are always critical. But there's one very critical need that I want to address in just a minute or two. We have very passionate volunteers, and our executive director, some of you might know, Matt Miller. Matt has asked if I'd be the outreach guy, because this is not Matt's stick. He's probably working there right now, handling food and getting it set up for the day. So I've been more than glad to handle this, as well as I'm a volunteer there. What I really want to talk about is what we call a logistical nightmare. The space we have to serve all of these families is about 1,200 square feet in the basement. A narrow stairway goes down one way, and a narrow stairway comes up the other way. And all the food has to go down one way and come up the other way. And just in aside, last year, we handled well over 500,000 pounds of food. And so there's a lot of logistics in handling it and repackaging it. And then we have another, I would say, another about 250 square feet in a garage that the church lets us use. Now, I wanted to mention that because I simply want to plant the seed that if, for some reason, there's any possible way that the Fire Department, which will be moving, if there's any possible way that the Food Pantry could be considered as a tenant of the Fire Department, that will be vacated. It's close, and we just, we could do more, but we really can't do more with the space that we have. So I don't know if the seed has been planted with you folks already. If it has, I want to fertilize it, and if it hasn't, I want to plant it. And I'd be willing to answer any questions, or attend any meetings, or do whatever we can to kind of keep that thought in your minds as you make decisions around the vacated fireplace. I really want to thank you for giving me this brief opportunity. Rose, you've heard this a couple times, but the various civic associations in Delhi Township and the western side of town simply amaze me. I will speak to any organization at any time, so if you have an organization that would like to hear about the Food Pantry, let me know. But the good that all of these civic organizations do is just amazing. And this is just another opportunity, I think, to benefit those who really need help in Delhi. Again, thank you very much for this opportunity to address you folks, and thank you for the work that you all do. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. All right. Next, on presentations, we're actually going to have Fire Chief Doug Campbell. And this is the Team Delhi that won the American Lung. You going to fill us in, Doug?
Fight for Air Climb.
Fight for Air Climb.
Yes. You know, I would first like to start by expressing my appreciation for the board for recognizing these gentlemen on their accomplishment. We should understand that the importance of their achievement isn't measured in minutes or seconds. It's not measured in the dollars raised. Their achievement's measured by the value they brought to our community. They demonstrate for others admirable human qualities that often go overlooked in the fire service. All these men already understand what it means to be a firefighter and have accepted the risks and responsibilities in keeping Delhi safe. I hope they understand they're not being recognized for their service or duty to this community. We are here to understand, we are here so that they understand that it takes a special type of person to roll up their sleeves and offer a part of themselves physically and mentally so that others have a better shot at life. Their cause this year was to raise money to help Cincinnati Children's Hospital fight against pediatric lung disease. Now, there's a tradition in the firehouse that when someone makes the news or is seen on TV, they owe the rest of the crew ice cream. For years, it's been seen as a debt you pay for notoriety in the firehouse. It serves as a constant reminder that you're only as good as your next run and that you didn't get there alone. Ice cream is the great equalizer to ensure that there is a price to pay for standing out in a crowd, because in our line of work, it takes a team. There is no single hero among us, as you, or just as in a single twig that can easily be broken. It takes a bundle of twigs to create a nearly unbreakable force. They started this journey as a team, they finished as a team. There was a few that finished slower than others. We won't judge. So here we are to recognize them as a team motivated by their own will. They organized the team, they trained, raised money, set themselves out publicly to face the competition, and won again as a team. They each will be receiving accommodation tonight from me, not for running up some stairs faster than others, but because they carried with them a part of Delhi and what it truly means to serve others. I want to ensure that they don't have any chance to forget tonight and how special this moment is and how their hard work impacts a community. For that, I thank you. Continue to show others the difference that you make isn't with the uniform you wear, but the commitment you put into overcoming a challenge, even if it means facing a challenge others aren't willing or capable of facing themselves. I don't think it would be right to allow them to just go back to serving Delhi with some kind of recognition. That is to say, I want the citizens of Delhi to know who they are and when they see them on the street. So tonight, I would like to present, from the Fire Department, a scarlet letter of sorts. But this is one that they can wear with pride, knowing that they're the only ones to get to wear them. So if they'd all come up here... All right. We've gone with the new uniform. You guys have seen it for the first one tonight, but only the ones that are behind me actually have the recognition on it. And on the chest in the front, 2016.
Very nice.
So, I mean, congratulations to these guys. They did fantastic work, and job's not done. I'm sure they're going to try to make five out of it. But I'd like to turn it over to Dan, because Dan's got all the details, and I'm sure he'd love to brag about himself.
This is Lieutenant Dan Alberts.
Lieutenant Dan Alberts. And if this is posted, then he owes the ice cream.
It'll be posted.
It's posted, Dan.
That's okay. I get out of it by buying black walnut. They only do that twice. I'm going to go ahead and bring this up a little bit here. Well, this is a real pleasant surprise. Really appreciate Chief Campbell and all the nice things that you mentioned, appreciate the board, and really appreciate everybody's support. This is a, did you guys know anything about this? This is a very good pleasant surprise. You know, we've, again, you know, we noticed this is our fourth time that Team Delhi has participated and won this event. You know, there's, we've had several of our members that have participated over the last couple of years, so it's not like this is the same team over the last four years. And so this is just a really good cause that we decided to rally behind. You know, the American Lung Association has sponsored this event for probably about, this was their 11th year. They usually try to raise about $175,000 or so dollars every year. And, you know, it's a good cause that we get behind. As far as all the money that's raised stays in the Cincinnati area, like he, like the chief mentioned, Cincinnati Children's Hospital is one of the beneficiaries. Last year, we raised somewhere around $2,000. This year, our grant total is $3,253 this year. So we had a great, we had a $1,000 donation from an anonymous Delhi Township resident. That really kind of catapulted our fundraising goals. I tried to set out to just do $2,500. So she really helped out. And so we basically, we've, you know, both of our full-time unions and part-time unions chipped in, the fire chief chipped in, you know, we've had a couple of local businesses chip in, families and relatives, that kind of thing. So, you know, we're hoping to, I'd like to hope to just keep adding to that every single year. So this year, I was going to say, as far as, you know, participating, we've, there's 40 firefighters that participated in the climb this year, and there was a total of about 12 or so teams. We were obviously in first place. The second-place team was basically nine minutes behind us. What they usually do is each team, they can have as many firefighters that are on it, and they take the top three best times, add those times together, and that's the team time. So, you know, we started training for this event. This year was probably, I would say, the first year where we started actually really training a little bit. We were a little bit more organized in training as a team. We started in early December with kind of making, at least usually meeting about once a week, whether we go to the gym, work out, or, you know, train in our training tower here at the Nebro Road Station. We even made a couple trips up to Nippert Stadium and ran the steps up there. So, you know, so I'm really proud of, we're all really proud of the results we turned out this year and even over the last past couple of years. So I want to go through real quick and just mention, you know, introduce some of the guys. Ben Pritchard here, in first place this year with a time of eight minutes and nine seconds. Last year, he was just under eight minutes, which I think is the fastest firefighter time at, you know, to date. So did a good job. Second place was Nick Conklin. He wasn't able to make it tonight with a time of 8:49. Yours Truly, third place with 9:20. Chris Hauptmann behind me in 9:41. And then Scott Summers, time of 10:16. And then Jesse Crook with a time of 11 minutes. And then Wally Russell, who couldn't make it tonight, is 11:31. And then we had another member, Anthony Malfeta, that also ran with us, and he used to work with us part-time for a couple of years. And so he got full-time employment at Mason Fire Department, so he was still able to run with us. So, again, really appreciate it. This is a big surprise for us, so we continue to hopefully, you know, we definitely want to come back and take number five next year and definitely increase our fundraising goals and try to bring more back for them. So, and even bring more recognition to this event. I just don't think it's an entirely popular event. They've had tenants that's dropped off since last year. So even bringing notoriety to this event in general would be great. So, thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Well, Dan, if you'll just wait a minute, the rest, the board would also like to recognize you.
Okay.
And if, Mr. Looby, if we could have that motion?
Motion 2016-39, approve the proclamation and recognition of Team Delhi for the eight firefighters who represented the Delhi Township Fire Department and the 2016 American Lung Association Fight for Air Climb.
I move motion 2016-039 to approve the proclamation and recognition of Team Delhi.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes. And I have the proclamation. Gentlemen, Delhi Township Fire Department, Team Delhi, special recognition. Whereas, Team Delhi, a team of eight firefighters representing the Delhi Township Fire Department, won the 2016 American Lung Association Fight for Air Climb with the fastest time and raised the most money, competing in the firefighter challenge against five firefighter teams. And whereas, the dedication to physical fitness and the mutual support of peers and management exemplifies the pride and the spirit of the Delhi Township Fire Department of being physically fit and ready for any call for service. And whereas, the recognition and celebration of Team Delhi's victory serves to bring our community together in honor of our firefighters and in appreciation for the excellent services and programs provided to the community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Delhi Township Board of Trustees that the members of Team Delhi be recognized for their success, winning with the fastest time of 26:19, and for raising $3,253 for the American Lung Association, the most money raised by any firefighter team. And be it further proclaimed that the Delhi Township Board of Trustees calls on the community to join in the celebration as we honor the Delhi Township Fire Department and members of Team Delhi for this special achievement. Lieutenant Dan Alberts, firefighter Nick Conklin, firefighter Jesse Crook, firefighter Chris Hauptmann, firefighter Ben Pritchard, firefighter Wally Russell, firefighter Scott Summers, and former Delhi firefighter Anthony Malfeta. Thank you, gentlemen, and we'd like to present this to you now.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
[applause] Everybody. Sorry, sorry, audience. Photo up.
Everybody in tight.
Got everybody? Okay. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. All right.
Okay, I have one more request. Mr. Pritchard, proud Papa, can you come up here and take a good one with the number-one firefighter on the team here?
That's right.
We're generational in Delhi. We're generational.
Oh, he's done it now. Payroll deduction. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thanks, guys. Thank you. Thank you, Chris.
Before you leave, I'd just like to say, I was down there. I didn't get to see you guys walk or run. My daughter climbed, and I was looking at all the firefighter grips, and I asked where Delhi was. That was a big mistake. I had a couple of words, and they said, "That's the team we're out to beat. We hope they don't show up." So thank you for making us so proud.
Thank you very much again. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. I believe we have one more presentation this evening. Pete Pritchard from the Steering Committee for the Bicentennial.
Well, good evening. That's a hard act to follow there. Well, we're finally here. And when I say here, I am referring to the bicentennial year. As you know, the Steering Committee was formed actually a year ago this month, March. So we've been really busy with planning and bringing together the various civic-minded groups here at Delhi to plan events throughout the year. So I just wanted to give a quick update, a couple of things that are going on, say, in the next five to six weeks that I'd like to mention real quick. Family history scanning stations, for people that want to download or, you know, get anything scanned, from documents to family photos and so on. That's happening this Saturday, actually, March 12th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Delhi Public Library. These scanning stations are going to be out throughout the year. There's two for next month of April as well. April 14th at Bailey Place at the same time, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and again on Saturday, April 25th at the Delhi Senior Center, and that's from 9:00 a.m. to noon. I'd like to also mention about the Bicentennial Community Cookbook. That's just real quick. There's, I know they're trying to gather 500 different recipes. I do believe there's 20 now, so we've got a little way to go. So I'd say we're desperate for people to hand them in. But anyway, there are two ways to submit that. You can obviously go online at gnrpublishing.com and use the username Delhi Cookbook, and password is Delhi Bi, B-I. And apparently, that's very user-friendly. For someone that is not have access to the internet, if they just want to drop it off, there are three locations. Brozy Tours on 417 Anderson Ferry, you can drop them off there, or here at the Administration Building, 934 Nebro Road, or the Delhi Seniors Building, 647 Nebro. I'd also like to mention something that kind of holds a little interest for me as well, and that's the Delhi Heritage Hike. That's being put on from the Western Wildlife Corridor, which is Tim Sisson and his group, and that's being held Saturday, April the 9th. That's at 2:00 p.m., and that is rain or shine. I do know that, obviously, it's in April, so we should have a lot of blooming going on, and they're going to take people up on what they call Bender Mountain. I know just about everybody, including myself, drives down Bender Road, and you do occasionally gaze up there at the hill, and this is your chance to get up there and really see a part of Delhi that so few people know anything about. Mr. Sisson and his group are going to really point out the formation of the area and obviously all the native plants and stuff that are blooming. There are two tours, because I know some people can get a little intimidated. There's two tours. One's about an hour. It's a little bit less strenuous. And of course, the other one is all the way up onto the top of the so-called Bender Mountain and out to the overlook there. But I'm actually going to take that one in myself. I think that sounds pretty cool. But that again is Saturday, April 9th at 2:00 p.m. You park down on Bender Road there in the gravel lot. The main reason I'm here tonight, actually, is I wanted to talk to you, the board, about a project that the Steering Committee would like to help establish. In honor of the bicentennial this year, we would like to create a lasting memorial. Now, we have looked at three different ideas that we were kind of interested in. And again, we've been talking about this since last year, so this is not a spur-of-the-moment thing. The first idea we had was looking at historical markers, and those, of course, are placed throughout the township, you know, pointing out historical significant places. And it's kind of a self-guided tour, right? So people would take like a pamphlet, pointing them out and how to drive, and what's obviously interesting about that point. So we looked at that. The second thing we were looking at was moving the firefighters' memorial at Five Points Park down here at Rapid Road. to the, out to the overlook there. But I'm actually going to take that one in myself. I think that sounds pretty cool. But that again, is Saturday, April 9th at 2:00 p.m. You park down on Bender Road there in the gravel lot. The main reason I'm here tonight, actually, is I wanted to talk to you, the board, about a project that the Steering Committee would like to help establish. In honor of the bicentennial this year, we would like to create a lasting memorial. Now, we have looked at three different ideas that we were kind of interested in. And again, we've been talking about this since last year. So this is not a spur-of-the-moment thing. The first idea we had was looking at historical markers. And those, of course, are placed throughout the township, you know, pointing out historical significant places. And it's kind of a self-guided tour, right? So people would take like a pamphlet, pointing them out and how to drive. And what's obviously interesting about that point. So we looked at that. The second thing we were looking at was moving the firefighters' memorial at Five Points Park down here at Rapid Run and Devil's Backbone, and moving that to the Greenwell Fire Station that you guys hopefully will be completing this year. And so we were thinking about this and how many people would use these particular, you know, ideas and so on for this. So we thought, hey, why don't we revisit something that has been discussed for quite some time. And we know that it's been discussed for a number of years. And there's been some great ideas. I know that there's always been talk about some kind of a concert venue up at Delhi Park. And I know, like I said, this has been visited multiple times, probably more times than even I know. But anyway, we're looking at that. And the Steering Committee kind of really latched on to that. Now, mind you, we're talking about something much smaller than has ever been proposed in the, here in the past. We're talking about a small concert venue there that we would like to try to help get established. The funding for this is going to come from the different individual events that we have during the whole year here. And we're also going into some grant money. And we hope to hear, we've already submitted that application and hope to hear back sometime in the month of April with that. Like I said, this is a big thing. And I know that we've, it's been talked about and so on. We have like several different plans. And like I said, it's a very scaled-back version of what anything has been discussed in the past. We would like to see something around the, the lake up there. We know there's been a lot of improvements to the park over the past, say, what, five or six years. I spoke to Mr. Torbeck at the Parks Department. He certainly has lent his, his, his support there behind us for this. And with that said, I'm here this evening to ask you guys for any input, along with any residents' input and any possible support. So is any questions or concerns or anything you guys may have?
Well, I heard your presentation this morning at the Delhi Business Association. And I just think it's wonderful that all these groups are coming together to make this happen. And I know it was a tough road in the beginning. And you've done an excellent job, Pete. So thank you very much. But we heard from Tim Sisson with the hike. We heard from Peg Schmidt with the Delhi Historical with getting together the scanning, who's also, they were also doing a Christmas gala, right?
That's correct.
So it was really a great presentation that they did this morning. And we're looking forward to every event that you're putting on and see what we can do with the rest of the projects.
There is a lot going on during the year. And there'll be more come out as, as the months come by here. I can honestly tell you, there are events for everyone. I mean, kids, young adults, older adults, everything. It's a lot going on. It seems like we've been planning this forever, not just one year, but longer. But things are finally going to start happening. And I think people will certainly enjoy with what they see. I'd like to kind of point out as well, as you just mentioned a few names, the Steering Committee consists of Mary Brigham from Mount St. Joe University, of course, Peg Schmidt, who's the historian of Delhi Township and with the Historical Society, and Jack Ryan. Jack is kind of our, our elder advisor. He served on the committee that celebrated the 160th anniversary of Delhi Township and our nation's birthday, 1976. He and Peg actually both did. But I'm here to tell you, they have really worked hard. And I've been right there to watch. And I mean, they have really worked. There are tons of hours involved in what they've done so far. And I couldn't be more proud to serve with them. But like I said, our lasting memorial that we're heading for is really want to do something up at that park. And like I said, we hope to work with Mr. Torbeck. And obviously, we're looking for support from you guys as well. And any input from the residents or even your board would certainly be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely. I think it's, it's up to the rest of us to really get out and support these events as they happen this summer, too. Because that, it will be a great party.
Yes, it will. It will. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Pete.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right. Trustee Correspondence. Trustee Oswald?
I want to welcome President Williams to Mount St. Joe. He's the seventh president of Mount St. Joe. I've talked to a lot of faculty and staff. They are excited about him. I've heard a lot of good things about him. Also, I want to congratulate Mount St. Joe on their basketball team, which made their first Division III NCAA tournament. Unfortunately, they lost last Friday, but this was the first time. If you look at the basketball team, where they've come in the last five years, it's pretty impressive. So their football program's getting bigger and better. Basketball program's getting better. They're adding more grad programs. So they're making the school a lot more attractive, which only helps Delhi. And we're looking to grow with them. So we welcome President Williams. Although we haven't met with him yet, we look forward to doing that soon.
Great. Thank you. Trustee Sturts?
No, nothing at this time. Thank you.
Okay. I did attend the Hamilton County Board of Health meeting, their annual meeting this year. And every year, they have kind of a hot topic. And this year's hot topic is the Zika virus. So what, I'm going to pass along to you the information that they shared with us. Mr. Tim Ingram and his staff at the Hamilton County Board of Health do just an unbelievable job. And here was the education I received and was better than last year when we passed around bedbugs. So this year, I've learned that there are three types of mosquitoes that carry the Zika virus. Ohio does have one of them. Okay? And there is not a vaccine. And there is not a quote, "treatment" for Zika virus. What we need to do is to get ahead of it with preventive measures. And part of that preventive measure is very similar to what we went through when we had West Nile virus. So you need to start right now and start eliminating any stagnant or standing water. This is culverts, drains, ditches, anything that's open, even swimming pools that have been closed through the winter that now may have stagnant pools on top of their covers. You need to look at that as well. The Zika virus itself, you probably, as an adult, as a regular, healthy adult, you won't realize that you have it. It's slight fever, achy joints. The big effect is to pregnant or soon-to-be-pregnant women. And that's why we have to treat this like West Nile and get ahead of it with preventative measures. If in fact, you have or you see this standing water in your property or somewhere in the township, we'd like you to reach out to the Zoning and Development Department. They will follow up with an inspection to this. And if necessary, take care of the, with the pesticide that goes into the pond. Okay? It's a, kind of like a tablet. All we can do is get ready for it, prepare for it, get ahead of it. And just remember West Nile and what we had to do then to eliminate the chances of getting it. And we should be fine. The Hamilton County Board of Health or Public Health is right now doing a surveillance. I mean, they're starting already to trap these mosquitoes. And they already are starting to apply a larvicide. It only takes a mosquito from an egg to a mature mosquito four days. So it's, it's a tough, it's a tough thing to get ahead of. But working together and letting the department know, I think we can prevent a lot of Zika through the season. All right? That's all I had. Mr. Looby, did you have a report from the fiscal officer?
Yes. The, the next meeting that was scheduled for Tuesday, the 15th, has been moved to Wednesday, March 16th, here at 5:30 in the Township Administration Building due to the primary elections. That's all I had.
All right. Thank you. There is no need for public hearing. Reports from department. Mr. Landrum?
I had mentioned a couple of weeks back or a month or so back that we had been nominated for a, an award for the Frank F. Ferris, the Second Planning Award. And I am here to, to announce that we have been selected as an award winner. We will be on Friday, accepting the award. This is just excellent. This shows and kind of validates our plan, that it's being recognized at a higher level, that they recognize our planning efforts. They have said, we've heard it from many different groups and organizations, that our, our plan is ahead of its time. It's forward-thinking. It's doable and so forth. And, and to be, you know, we just adopted it, the board did, in November. We're in the implementation phase. And we're already being awarded recognition for it. So this, it's good news. And hopefully, that helps us even attract even more developers as we've already are talking to many of them. And so we're very pleased that. And so that'll be on Friday when we accept that award.
Great. Another award for another team from Delhi.
Yay. Yay team.
Did you have anything? Okay. All right. Reading of the resolutions. Mr. Looby?
Resolution 2016-26, Resolution approving purchase order obligations incurred on behalf of the township by the Township Administrator, authorizing payment of certain purchase order obligations and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mr. Seavy?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mr. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-27, Resolution authorizing replacement of advertisements for bids for the Delhi Township Street Rehabilitation and Repair Project, number 2016-A, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Ron Ripperter?
Thank you. This is our yearly road project going out to bid. We'll be opening the bids at the next meeting and then awarding the next meeting after that if everything goes smooth. We are going out a little bit earlier than we have in the past this year. But hopefully, it helps out and things go smooth.
Great. Thank you.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, call the roll, please.
Mr. Seavy?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mr. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-28, Resolution amending the job description for facilities and property foremen in Article 12 of the Delhi Township amended and restated summary of policies dated January 1st, 2014, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Landrum?
Yes, this is, well, will be a vacant position. And the position will basically change, really not changing any duties, but being more specific on physical requirements of the position, as well as going from the, having a CDL be a preferred to being required after six months on the job. So basically, this position will be a vacant position. And if it's decided to be filled, it will have a little bit more specifications and requirements for the position.
Okay. Thank you.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mr. Seavy?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mr. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-29, Resolution authorizing beverage agreement with bottling group LLC, Pepsi, for the purchase and supply of Pepsi-branded products and related equipment at Delhi Park, authorizing signature by the Township Administrator, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Josh Torbeck?
Thank you, trustees. This is a three-year contract with Pepsi. Everybody seems to be very excited about this, more so than I ever would have thought. But we're excited to have him. We'll, with the next resolution, we'll be having a contractor come to the concession stand. And they'll be working directly with Pepsi. This is for the concession stand and our vending machines. Well, and he's also a local guy. And he worked with the township, kind of gave us a, a break on the contract, helping us out in ways probably other places wouldn't get. So the contract is friendly for us.
Great. Great job. Thank you.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mr. Seavy?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mr. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-30, Resolution authorizing agreement with Maydays LLC for limited concession services at Delhi Park, authorizing signature by the Township Administrator, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Torbeck?
Very excited about this partnership. If anybody knows, this was a struggle for us last year. We reached out to a couple of people. A couple of people reached out to us last year as far as, you know, dealing with the operations of the concession stand. Many months of talking with different people, we came to a conclusion with Maydays and the owner, Dave Arnold. Couple of things about Dave that I think will lead to success with the concession stand. He's been a Delhi resident or in the surrounding community his entire life. This will be the only brick-and-mortar place that he'll be dealing with. He won't be a big corporate entity working with different, different states or different locations. He's been in the restaurant industry for over 20 years. Included in that experience is concession stand sales at recreational areas. So he's got direct experience with this. And he brought ideas to the table that are exciting, you know, expanded menu, not just your regular chips and hot dogs. We're talking about real food. People, something people can get excited about. So we're excited to have him. It's, it's going to be a good partnership. So it's a good thing.
Good. Great. Thank you.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mr. Seavy?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mr. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-31, Resolution certifying violation of abatement expenses of 576 Orchard View Place to the county auditor for assessment and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mr. Seavy?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mr. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-32, Resolution declaring nuisance for accumulated debris at 753 Lollaby Court and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Roach?
Thank you, trustee Seavy. I received a complaint at this occupied address of this debris. We issued an order letter with no compliance. On our inspection this morning, the debris's still there. So we're requesting that your board declare this property a nuisance so it can address this violation with our nuisance abatement procedures.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mr. Seavy?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mr. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Citizens comments. I do have two speakers signed in this evening. First will be Russ Brozi, speaking to us on the DBA.
Okay, come up here for the Delhi Business Association. We have an Easter egg hunt, March the 19th. Be there at 9:45. It starts at 10. It'll be over 10:03. There'll be 5,000 eggs and 200 free gifts. And each child gets an Easter bunny chocolate and ages from 0 to 8. And this is put on by the Delhi Business Association, which is over 110 members. So they put this on each year. So everybody's welcome to Delhi to come. So bring their kids or grandkids and have a fun day picking up eggs.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brozi. Also, this evening, we're going to hear from Don Osterfeld. And he's going to give us an update on some Delhi Township Veterans Association events and awards.
Thank you for having me. Just a little update on, we have like three coming big events. Our first one is going to be May 29th, right here, on Memorial Day service. It will be from, start at 1 o'clock. We will have two color guards presenting the colors, the Delhi Township Veterans Association and the American Legion Post 534. We will have patriotic music, bagpipe, and a singer, the reading of the 19K KIA's, and a 21-gun salute. After the service is over, we'll be selling some Spent the Pot tickets as we did last year. And we will have a grill-out compliments of the Skirk Game Committee. Parking is, we all know, is very limited up here. So we will have a shuttle bus running from here, from the Senior Center from here, and then back to the Senior Center after the event is over. On June the 11th is our bicentennial display in the park by the lake. We will have a replica of the USS Cincinnati sub on, on display. We will have some... We will have some vehicles and items that the Navy SEALs use. We will also have a display by the US Army. And there will also be a fishing event going on. All this is going to be happening between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 in the afternoon. And to sum all this up, I am very proud to announce that one of our own, Command Sergeant Major Henry Armstrong, US Army, retired, World War II veteran who served under General Patton, is going to receive a very prestigious medal from the French government. It's going to be the French Knights Legion of Honor. And we will have the honor of having the French consulate from Chicago fly down here to present this to Henry. And the event is going to take place on March the 19th at 9:00 a.m. in the morning at Grace Convent Church at 6420 Bridgetown Road, with a reception afterwards at the church with snacks and drinks. Everyone is invited to come. And I just want to add this to it, this award that Henry's going to receive is the highest award that the French government can bestow upon someone. And this is for his service in France during World War II. And the first time that this medal was presented, it was presented by Napoleon Bonaparte in 1804. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. I think that's absolutely an amazing honor for Mr. Armstrong. And hopefully, you know, we realize what a treasure we have with him. Did you forget something, Mr. Osterfeldt?
I have a couple of pictures of the medal.
Oh, okay.
Lady. Thank you, Don. Oh, wow. That's impressive.
Very nice. Thank you.
It can be pinned on him. It can be pinned on, or it can also be put around his neck, whatever the French consulate is going to do.
Command Sergeant Major Henry Armstrong deserves this.
Right. He's spent 41 years.
He's our World War II guy. He's our go-to guy. Okay, that ends Citizens' comments. Announcement of community events.